Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call our December 1st, 2020 meeting of the Lake County Board of Supervisors to order. Tradition, we'll go ahead and stand for a moment of silence. Do we have any dedications today for moments of silence for the board? Go ahead and stand for a moment of silence. Supervisor Sabatier, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any item number four? Do we have any extra items that are not appearing on the posted agenda today? See any, but I will ask the question. Okay. Hearing none. Go ahead and move to number five. Number five is approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda is usually non-controversial. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the board, from the consent agenda? All right. I know we had a request from admin to pull item. And I get this correct, Carol, is item 5.5? Pulling that item?
Uh, this is Jake. Carol is currently experiencing issues with her microphone.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chair, I will agree that 5.5 was the item to be pulled, just for clarification.
Yes. Yes, just for clarification later on. So with that, we will go ahead and ask anyone from the public. Jake, can you open up the room? We'll see if anyone from public would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Uh, yes, I've sent a unmute request out to the floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake. Go close the room, bring it back to board chambers. Do we have anyone in board chambers that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
At this moment, we do not have anybody from the public in the board chambers.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and close that and we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the items. I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.4, 5.6 through 5.20. Yeah, 5.20.
Second. Okay, motion.
Supervisor.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it sounds like Carol was having some issues with her microphone. So we don't wanna set up and delay anything. I know that right off the bat, we have. Let's go right to. Let's go to public input.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can hear you now, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, well, now that you're back then, let's go ahead and take up item 5.5, which was pulled from the consent agenda. Carol, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. There's no change to what is being proposed. There was just a correction to the first two links that are on the second page of the protocol. The links took you to an earlier version of the state guidance on masking. And while you could, you could get to the guidance intended to be attached, which was updated November 16th, it took two steps to get there. We have since fixed that and I asked Johanna to upload a corrected version. Johanna, is the corrected version attached?
Uh, yeah, I reposted yesterday, so it should be correct now.
Yeah, I see it.
So that's, that's all I needed, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board or comments? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. Jake, if you could please open the room.
All right. I have sent a unmute request out to the floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute.
You know what, and I apologize, I was moving too quick there and working with the microphone. I need to read the item and I do apologize for that. Item 5.5 is approved amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Return to Work, Work Site Protection Protocol. That's what we're taking public comment on, on this time.
All right, should I continue now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, so I've sent, oops. All right, so I sent out another unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, if you'd like to make public comment, this is your chance to do so on item 5.5. Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and close the room up and we'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier, do we still have no one in chambers at this point?
No one in the chambers.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action on item 5.5.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Return to Work, Work Site Protection Protocol.
Your second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with our 6.1 item, public input. See any forms filled out today on public input, but Jake, if we could go ahead and open up the room, if someone would like to make public comment or have public input.
All right, yeah. I've sent a request out. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and close the room, bring it back. Close the room, we'll bring it back to board. Looks like we're a little bit ahead of schedule here on our agenda. Okay, let's go ahead and see in the next couple of minutes here, we got about two minutes. Uh, let's go ahead and just go to our calendars. Let's see if we can get those out of the way a little bit earlier today. So Supervisor, let's start with Supervisor Sabatier.
Um, so the end of the day today, just planning on having some conversations here in the courthouse with some of our department heads, just to make sure that some of the projects I'm working on are moving along. Um, working on the Christmas parade that's gonna happen this Saturday, having some meetings over the course of the week, just to finalize all of that. Will be part of an EOC call in the morning on Thursday, CSAC call later on the afternoon on Thursday, and that's with the state, just to get updates of what's happening. And we'll be attending virtually the Clear Lake City Council meeting that evening as well. Uh, on Friday, I will be taking some time to go and attend the Clear Lake Cyanobacteria and Cyanotoxin Task Force meeting, as well as meeting with CC4C. And that is all that I have on my calendar thus far, with the Middle Creek Project meeting the following Monday. Um, and then meeting with our CAO to prepare for Tuesday, the 8th meeting.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. So finish it after today's meeting. Tomorrow morning, I have TID meeting at 8:30, Economic Development at 10:00 a.m. Um, on Thursday, I will be attending a class through the CSAC Institute from 9:00 to 1:00. And then Friday, be conducting another class through the CSAC Institute. Um, Monday, Middle Creek Restoration, and then COVID Recovery. Think that switched to weekly, I didn't make it yesterday, but I think I can make it tomorrow. I will, and then a CAO meeting next Monday at 3:00 following that meeting.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott?
Um, this evening, I have a school board meeting at 6:00 with Lakeport Unified School District. Tomorrow meeting, tomorrow, I have an 8:30 meeting with the Smart Start Baby Bundles through Hope Rising and First Five. At 11:00, I'm hoping to do the first transport for Hope Center. Um, they're hoping to open their doors tomorrow. There's still a couple boxes we have to click before we make that happen. So we're really hoping tomorrow is the day. And in the afternoon, at 1:00, I have a meeting with the Children's Council. On Thursday at 3:00, I have our COC meeting. I was thinking about on Friday, attending the Cyanobacteria meeting if there wasn't more. I know, I noticed we were all invited, so I see just one of us so far will be attending, so I might be attending that. It's just going to be one other supervisor. On Saturday, I have a meeting concerning the Warming Center and how that's going to be looking for this season. And then Monday, a SaferX meeting at 10:00 in the morning and preparing for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot scheduled, but I do, I am working on putting together a meeting now that the holidays are over with staff and Supervisor-elect Paeska with folks at Bottle Rock Power, trying to determine what, what to do with that property through decommissioning and other things that they have planned up there. So I'll be trying to schedule that for sometime this week. And then we have, are you gonna be around towards the end of the week, Bruno? Okay. We have our annual foster child toy drive that, that we're doing and Bruno's been generous enough to help me with that and then offered to carry on the tradition after this, this year. And so we've been, we've gotten piles of gifts already for the kids and we're probably gonna try to deliver those maybe Friday if, if that works for you.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Okay, all right, and that's it for me, thanks.
All right, thank you Supervisor Brown. Okay, after the meeting today, obviously have general review for ourselves. Um, then I do have some follow-up phone calls I need to make on some projects down here in South Lake County. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, have the Economic Development Task Force meeting in the morning. In the afternoon, I do have on my calendar, there are a search planning meeting. Um, on Thursday, have the South Deal Committee meeting, which is on WebEx. And then I did on the Cyanobacteria, but it sounds like Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott will be attending that. And then on Monday, have the COVID Recovery Group meeting and then back here on, on Tuesday for the board meeting, so. Okay, thank you very much, Supervisors. Now we'll continue on with our agenda here. So we are at our 6.2 item. Our 9:10 a.m. item, Presentation of a Proclamation Commending Jan Koppinger for Her 12 Years of Service to the County of Lake.
Um, I have that here.
Yep.
Moak, if you, you want me to go ahead and?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely Supervisor Brown, if you would, we'd be on.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Jan Koppinger is here with us and.
Yeah, I sent her a text asking if she was gonna come over and she said she was gonna do it from Zoom and, and I understand that and I get it. We've done a lot of those through the year, but it's really unfortunate that, that we're not able to appropriately, in my opinion, appropriately honor Jan, this amazing person that we've had the privilege of working with for the last several years. She's been just an amazing asset to our team and a Zoom proclamation just is not even close to what she, what she deserves, but it's the best that we can do right now. So I'm gonna offer this on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, commending Jan Koppinger for her 12 years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas Jan Koppinger was hired as the Special District's Fiscal Officer on October 16th, 2008, where she excelled in managing over 27 different budgets and funds, as well as supervising and directing fiscal staff. And whereas on May 15th, 2013, Jan was promoted to the Utility Systems Compliance Coordinator, where she was responsible for the coordination of environmental and regulatory compliance for water and wastewater systems, funding and construction activities. And during Jan's time as Utility Systems Compliance Coordinator, she played an instrumental role in securing three major drought grants. And whereas on July 6th, 2016, the Lake County Board of Supervisors promoted Jan to Special District's Administrator. As Administrator, she managed a multimillion dollar budget, oversaw the operation of nine water systems and four wastewater systems, serving over 30,000 customers in Lake County and managed a staff of 45. And whereas throughout the course of her work, Jan has established many meaningful professional relationships with local tribal governments and worked to address their concerns as county capital projects were constructed. And whereas on 2, in 2015, after the devastating valley fire, Jan coordinated with local, state, and federal representatives to secure over $10 million in grant funding to install sewer system in the community of Anderson Springs, making it possible for fire survivors to rebuild on lots that would otherwise be unbuildable. And whereas in addition, following the valley fire, Jan's efforts with FEMA led to the rebuilding of two water systems, Bonanza Springs and Starview. Devastated during the fire in the community of Cobb, new water mains, services, meters, additional fire hydrants were installed during the reconstruction project. And whereas Jan has shown admirable commitment and dedication to the service of Lake County Special Districts, after more than 12 years of proud public service, Jan Koppinger will retire from the County of Lake Special Districts on December 1st, 2020. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Lake County Board of Supervisors, I hereby commend Jan Koppinger for her years of service to Lake County and wish her happiness in her retirement. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, Jan, I see that you're on there. Would you like to say some, there you go, excellent.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna thank you all. I have really, really loved my years working for the county. I've just, um, I can't say enough about how much I appreciate the support and the guidance I receive from the Board of Supervisors. And it's almost sad to leave. I'm excited, but I'm also very sad to leave all the good people. So just thank you all.
All right, Jan, thank you. I know there are plenty of folks on this line that do wanna make comment, but what I wanna do is see if the board, if any of the board members have comment at this time. Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, Jan, thank you very much for all the work that you've done, especially post-fire work has just been absolutely amazing and ensuring that people have the ability to rebuild. Uh, I think one of the programs that you were a part of that was absolutely celebrated at our LAFCO meetings was the consolidation of all these water districts up in Cobb. It was insane to have, I think it was about 14 different water districts or something like that, if I remember correctly. I think only 10 of them consolidated, but that was a massive project and you were absolutely a part of making that happen and dealing with the Cobb area water district and dealing with the state and dealing with other agencies to make that happen. Absolutely appreciate seeing you doing that project. And that was before my time here on the Board of Supervisors and watching you from the perspective of Board of Supervisors, you've only continued to do that same level of work. Uh, I appreciate you for setting the bar at the level that you set, because now we have to keep meeting that bar and I hope that we can, we can do that as we keep moving forward. So thank you for your hard work. Uh, I've seen your personality shine. Uh, your staff appreciates you, respects you, and that's exactly the kind of leader that we need in these important positions. So thank you for your dedication to the county and thank you for your hard work and I wish you the best for your retirement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Scott?
Jan, you know, I really appreciate it working with you and I will have to say, not only have you helped our community be able to rebuild, but you've helped us be able to build with your ability to upgrade our facilities so we can lift those moratoriums. I don't think the community fully understands how important that is to Lake County to be able to have these empty lots, be able to have homes on them. So I, I really appreciate it working with you. Um, you are one person that if there is money to be found to bring to this community to upgrade our facilities, you find it. So you definitely have some big shoes to fill and enjoy your retirement, but you definitely will be missed here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, well, Jan, it's, it's time and, you know, we've, we've been, you know, wondering how we're gonna go about this and we have a path now. But one thing I can say that definitely I appreciate and I've always kinda known this about you is your willingness to just tell us, tell us the, the real deal. And not only that, but when, when we have issues with different folks that have complaints, we get it all on the table and, and they, they, they have to, they would just learn that, you know, what, hey, this is the way it is, but you know, here's a path and they would have to come forward with it. But you were always very supportive of your staff, because there would be a lot of times when the, the consumer would be trying to point fingers or whatever and, and kind of, you know, games here and there. And I just love the way you handled it and it's, it's something that I know a lot of us appreciate and backing your, your, your employees and also just keeping it, keeping it real, you know? So I hope you enjoy your, your, your retirement and you'll be greatly missed.
Thank you, EJ.
And Jan, you know, I'll just finish up with, you know, just saying that I've appreciated the four years I've had to serve with you, to see your tenacity before I came on the board with the rebuild project in Anderson Springs and the consolidation that happened up on Cobb. Um, it was just, it was a pleasure to watch. So I just wanna say thank you very much for everything that you've done. You are going to be missed. I know hopefully we will be running across each other after you get some time off and wanna, I know you're gonna get bored, cuz that's the type of person you are. You're a hard-working, dedicated individual and I just wanna thank you for all the years of dedication to Lake County and its citizens, because you're, you're one of the hardest workers around. So thank you very much and I greatly appreciated my time to serve with you.
Thank you, Moak. Thank you all.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open this up, cuz I know we have other folks that would like to say some kind words. So we're gonna go ahead and start with our sheriff, Brian Martin.
Good morning, thank you so much. Um, I had the, the privilege of working with Jan during several emergencies, both fires and floods over the years. And I gotta tell you, Jan, I really appreciate your candor, your hard work, your ability to cooperate and to get things done. Working in the EOC, there's a lot of people on this call that have worked in the EOC and everybody knows how difficult it is to work in those situations under some really difficult circumstances. Uh, and to get stuff done, we had people that had to embody a spirit and a work ethic and Jan definitely did. Jan wasn't afraid to say what needed to be said and sometimes it made people uncomfortable, but I gotta tell you, those difficult things sometimes need to be said, even if they make people uncomfortable and Jan, and that's what Jan did. I appreciated that very much. I valued that. I thank you, Jan. I enjoyed working with you, I respect what you did and I hope you have the, the best retirement ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, Jake, did you, did you open it up there?
Uh, no, I didn't open up the entire room, but I will send a request out right now. So if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Jan, I'm gonna jump in. Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director, and I just wanna say thank you so much for all the years working together. Uh, Brian mentioned the work in the EOC and you and I worked together on a number of emergencies and, and you were always there and, and always, I always appreciated working with you and, and I'll echo everything that Brian said. I just, I really admire how you made things real. Uh, you said, you said the things that needed to be said and, and you did it in a professional and straightforward way. And I just, I really admire everything that you've accomplished and just wanna say thanks for, for all the years working together and enjoy your retirement.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, I see Denise, go ahead.
Hi, thank you Chair Simon. Uh, Jan, I, I ditto everything that everybody else has already said. We've spent a lot of hours in the EOC together, working different tables, but for the same goal. And you've always been honest and hardworking and caring for this community and this county. So it's just been a pleasure to work with you and thank you for your department's assistance through COVID and the sewer testing and all the input that you guys have given. Um, really appreciate working with you for the last 12 years. Thank you, hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Denise.
Jan, this is Carol. I also wanna wish you the best in your retirement. I mean, everybody has said some fantastic things, I echo all of those. Um, the, the thing I wanted to point out is how incredibly responsive you are. Uh, if I reach out to you, you almost always just answer your phone. And if you don't, I've heard, I hear from you within just moments. So your accessibility as a department head is extraordinary and appreciated. Best to you.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanna echo kind of what everyone else has said. Um, you've been an inspiration, Jan. Uh, working for you has been challenging at times, but your, your singular focus on really serving the customers in this community and serving them well has just been a, a real inspiration to, to work with you and work under you. Um, I appreciate your mentorship over the years, the guidance you provided. Um, you definitely leave some big shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to the challenges and looking forward to carry on in the direction that you've set for this department.
Thank you, Scott. You got this. I know that Special Districts is in good hands.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Anita, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Jan, I can't believe you're getting out of here ahead of me. Um, I, I, I thought there was a permission thing going on there, but, uh, anyway, I've, I've enjoyed working with you. As you know, we've had some real Gordy and Not kind of problems over the years and your attitude has always been, we'll find a way to make this happen, to make this work. It's always been very much appreciated. Thank you and enjoy the heck out of your retirement.
Thank you, Anita, and I really appreciate all your support over the years. You kept me out of trouble.
We kept each other.
Okay, if there are no more comments, we're gonna go ahead and bring it back to the board and I will, Supervisor Brown, would you like to close out with any comments or?
Well, no. I, I think I, you know, stated mine up front, I just, you know, we.
Okay.
Those times after the valley fire, you know, being the first real disaster we had, we spent a lot of time together and, and, you know, we kicked around a lot of ideas and it's always, it's always easy for us as board members to come up with, with ideas, but then it takes somebody like Jan and, and the rest and her crew to actually implement them and then amaze all of us, because that wasn't any, any, I had no idea just how, how good it would turn out. So I appreciate her so much.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay. All right, Jan, thank you very much and, you know, enjoy your retirement. Enjoy these, enjoy this time, you've earned it, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, well, with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next, our 6.3 item, our 9:15 a.m. item, a presentation of a proclamation for Calpine Corporation, the Geyser's 60 Years of Power. I see we have on a representative from Calpine.
Yeah.
Danielle.
I have this proclamation. Yeah, I have this proclamation as well, if you'd like for me to read it.
Absolutely Supervisor Brown, please.
And I think Danielle's on, I thought I saw her on.
Yeah, she, she is on there.
Earlier there, okay.
I'm here, um, they, they took my video away and.
Oh, Jake. Jake, Jake, can you get the video back for Danielle, please?
Maybe trade her for Moak.
Turn it off, but she, she should be able to turn it back on.
Trade, trade her for Bruno and I.
It says, you cannot start your video because the host has stocked it.
Oh, okay, here you go. Sorry about that.
I also was trying to raise my hand to speak up for Jan. Um, Jan, I'm gonna miss you. You've been awesome. You've been awesome to work with and just did a lot for the geothermal community and keeping the community connected, so I, you know, just wanted to chime in there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that Danielle. I know you guys worked really close together. But on, and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to offer this proclamation recognizing Calpine Corporation and the Geysers for 60 years of power. Like Nancy Pelosi, I guess. I don't know if that's appropriate, 60 years of power. I don't know. Anyway, whereas the power, the year 2020 marks 60th anniversary of commercial geothermal power production at the Geysers, the world's largest geothermal power resource located in the Mayacumus Mountains of Lake County. And whereas Calpine's fleet of 78 power plants represent nearly 26,000 megawatts of generation capacity of clean, cost-effective, reliable and fuel-efficient electricity to communities in 22 U.S. states, Canada and Mexico. And whereas at the Geysers, the Geysers is the largest producing geothermal field in the world and Calpine is the nation's largest renewable geothermal power producer, operating 13 geothermal power plants, generating up to 725 megawatts of green baseload energy around the clock. And whereas Calpine's renewable geothermal electrical generation at the Geysers comprises 9% of California's total renewable generation meets the, there's a couple of typos here we'll have to fix, meets the typical power needs of Lake, Sonoma and Mendocino Counties as well as a portion of the power needs for Marin and Napa Counties. And whereas through innovation, Calpine's consolidation, integration of the steam fields and power plants at the Geysers by using a natural, clean energy source, heat from the steam produced one and a half miles below the earth's surface to produce electricity that is helping to meet California's bold goal for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas Calpine's operation at the Geysers employs over 300 people, a majority of which reside in Lake County and with about 150 full-time contractor jobs, contributing significantly to the local economy through property taxes, royalties, goods and services. And whereas Calpine takes seriously its role as community member by supporting local emergency response units, helping area organizations, charities, schools, and maintaining a visitor's center available for community events and meetings, helping draw tourists to the area and educating the public on the benefits of geothermal power. And whereas Calpine having teamed with Lake County to build the nation's first recycling water to power project, the Southeast Geysers affluent pipeline, followed by the Santa Rosa Recharge Geysers Pipeline Project, provided an environmentally responsible way to dispose of treated recycled water while preventing its discharge into local rivers and lakes, while providing a sustainable source of steam for Calpine's power operations that has helped sustain generation capacity at the Geysers. And whereas Calpine has achieved many noteworthy environmental production and operational awards for its ongoing commitment to safety and the environment and the excellence, its excellence in lease maintenance in the Geysers. Be it proclaimed at the Lake County Board of Supervisors congratulates Calpine Corporation on its commitment to environmentally, to environmentally responsible power production, its outstanding financial and volunteer contributions to our area communities in which it operates and the innovation, professionalism and expertise of its employees who work hard daily to ensure the sustainability of the Geysers and continuation of green geothermal power production in Lake County for years to come. Passed and adopted this first day of December 2020.
Excellent. Okay, Danielle, would you like to say some things?
I would just like to say that it's an honor to accept this on behalf of the hardworking team at the Geysers and, you know, a few comments from our management team is that we really appreciate working with everyone at the county. It's, it's definitely an interesting time in the energy markets and all of the support we get in Lake County is just really appreciated. And most of our employees live in Lake County, so it's really great to be engaged and active with the county and we were honored to receive this proclamation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Danielle. I would like to just say a couple of words, obviously, is, you know, I had the honor to, you know, obviously participate in the 60-year film. I know that you guys did on that to honor the Calpine Geysers. And as you spoke, a lot of folks are multi-generational families that live in South County that have worked there and, you know, provide great opportunities, you know, obviously, and all that money is reinvested in our community. I know that what you guys do for fundraising and donations to our community is just above and beyond. So I just want to thank you very much from the Lake County Board of Supervisors and myself as District One Supervisor for your involvement in our community and the opportunities that you bring for employment. So thank you. I hope we get another 60 years and we're talking 120 years and the next generations are given the same praise that is being given now. So thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
I would just like to also echo that. I, we really appreciate, I don't know what, if the community really sees what Calpine does for Lake County, but you guys are everywhere, helping out every nonprofit, people in need, fundraisers. It's just amazing how much you help out our community and I just really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments from board members?
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what the other supervisor had mentioned. And also, what I really appreciated was on my tour, just the availability and the, every question that I had, it was just a, you know, explanation that needed to be told and I really appreciate that type of transparency. And not only that, but the community effort, the community fundraising and whatnot, that's very, that's very important to the county.
Okay.
I know I, I know I got to read the.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, you know, I got to read the proclamation, so I got to say some of it, but it's been a real experience and honor for me to, over the years, be able to work with, with Danielle specifically. You know, Calpine's great and they're, you know, they, she, but they, they're only as good as the people that work for them and the representation that they have. And I, I can't even, if you were to put somebody in a room and try to imagine a person that could represent your company, you'd never come up with anything better than what they've done with Danielle. I think she's done a fabulous job and, and the community is, is so much better for her efforts and theirs as well. So thank you Danielle for all your, all your commitment.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open it up and see if we have any other public comment at this point. Jake, did you open the room?
Uh, yes, I've sent a mute request out to the Zoom floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, this is Jan and I just wanted to say, having worked with the geothermal committee and the seismic monitoring advisory board, I've been able to see firsthand what Calpine, the generosity that they give to this county and I am so impressed. I mean, Calpine really is the gem of the county. And Danielle, you've been such a pleasure and actually a good friend to work with and I thank you for everything.
Okay, Sheriff Martin?
Yes, thank you. I've also had the pleasure of working with Calpine and Danielle over the years. I echo exactly what Jan says. What a great partner to have in this community. If, if you've ever had the opportunity to go up and take, a lot of people on this call have had the opportunity to go up and take a tour of the, the Geysers up there. It's pretty impressive what's happening up there. Their, their safety is second to none. Their partnership with the community, we've had National Night Out events that were hosted there at the Calpine Visitor Center. They're consistent supporters of first responders here in Lake County. And I want to thank Calpine and Danielle on behalf of the Sheriff's Office for everything they do for Lake County.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close it up then Jake and we'll bring it back, bring it back to the board for any final comments. All right. Danielle, thank you very much. And we're going to go ahead and move forward with our next item. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to our 6.4 item, our 9:20 a.m. item, consideration of an update on COVID-19. Dr. Pace?
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. Gary Pace doing the COVID update. So today we have a total of 951 cases, which is up quite a bit. It's up 65 from last Wednesday. So this is a big increase for us. We have, we have had a total of 20 people pass away now. The most recent person passed away several days ago, was over 65, had other medical conditions, but was COVID positive and was having some COVID symptoms. We currently have 12 people in the hospital, four of them are local, eight of them have been transferred out of the area, which is significant. Normally we have, you know, typically three to four. We've been as high as six Lake County residents that are hospitalized, but now we're double that. And this is going to be significant as we end up talking because we're seeing a lot of rise throughout the state and throughout the country. And it's becoming a very concerning situation. The leaders in the state, public health and in the hospital associations are quite concerned about what they see coming and what they see coming in the next couple of weeks. Currently, our case rate is 11 per 100,000, which is, you know, it was like five a couple of weeks ago. So it's a little over double that. Our test positivity rate has, has increased to 4.9. Still, that's still in a pretty good range. So as people are probably aware, we moved into the purple tier this last Sunday, two days ago. First time we've really been there since the very beginning of this pandemic back in March and April when we were in the sort of shelter in place mode. Once they moved to the tier system, I believe it was May, we've been in the red tier the whole time since then. And so this is the first time we've really had to go backwards and do the things that are required. And so just to kind of quickly review what happens when you go into purple, indoor dining is no longer permitted at restaurants, indoor worship services at churches are no longer permitted. They all need to be outdoors. Gyms and exercise classes are not permitted indoors. They need to be outdoors as well. Schools that have not opened prior to that point cannot open now. If they were open previously, they can continue being open. There is an exemption for elementary schools. They have to go through a waiver process, a whole paperwork process. And there's now a kind of a statewide, kind of, they call it a modified shelter in place that starts at 10 o'clock at night, goes till 5:00 in the morning where people are supposed to stay in their home except for essential business. So you shouldn't be out of the house between 10:00 at night to 5:00 in the morning for any kind of non-essential business. All these are attempts to try to decrease the kind of activity that seems to lead to transmission. So we are, so in the state now, 99% of the state's population is in the purple tier. There's like six or seven counties that are, that haven't moved in the purple tier, but they're very small counties, most of them on the east, except for, I think San Francisco or Marin, one of those is, is moving that way, but hasn't gone there yet. So again, we're seeing a significant increase locally and around the state and there's a lot of work going on to how to stop this surge. And just a second, Sarah, our epidemiologist is going to speak. Well, why don't we have her come on now? She will give some of the specific data and, and then I'll come back and talk about everything else. So Sarah, if you can come on there.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to.
Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning. May I share my screen?
Uh, yes, if you can, go ahead.
And maybe talk a little louder, Sarah?
Okay.
Jake, you'll make that possible?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Just wanted to highlight what's happening at the state level and then what we're seeing in Lake County in terms of new cases, the increasing cases and then the impact statewide on, on the healthcare system. I think this gives good context to understand why the state called the, what they're calling the emergency break over the weekend to try to reduce further transmission. So here we're looking at the number of new cases in California since the beginning of the pandemic. And you can see that we've had this dramatic increase since mid to late October. And we're now at a high of about 14, almost 15,000 cases a day, which is significantly higher than about the 10,000 cases we saw in the summer. We see a similar rise in Lake County here, looking at the week of October 18th and October 25th is when we started to see the increase in cases locally. A couple points on our EPI curve here is that I have these gray bars because data are still coming in as, as tests come in. So we'll likely see some movement here. And then this purple line is when we exceed 43 cases a week. That's what puts us into the purple tier. So that's an important threshold for us here in Lake County. And why, in part, and a large part, why the state pulled the emergency break is due to this trend line right here. We're looking on the left. This is the number of hospitalized patients at the state level. And again, we see hospitalizations trail new cases by about two weeks. So we start to see in early November at the state level, the dramatic increase in hospitalized patients. At the state level, they estimate that about 12% of cases become infected, become hospitalized. In Lake, we've been a little bit lower, about 7% of known cases have been hospitalized. But again, just going back to our increase here and increase at the state level, really anticipating this in early November, the state level, the dramatic increase. On the right, just of note, is at the state level, the number of ICU beds available. So that's been declining as well as we head into December. Just quickly, this is zooming in on the previous graph. This was shared by the California Department of Public Health yesterday. Here's the increase in hospitalizations over the last two weeks of November. So current projections put us in a pretty dire situation in terms of healthcare capacity in December. Here's the same time period, looking at the number of ICU admissions. And so it was pretty much looking at these data and then these projections that came out with the state yesterday of why there's been a lot of movement in terms of trying to reduce transmission. So here we're looking at the percent of ICU beds currently occupied and then the projected total by Christmas Eve. And you can see regionally for us here in Northern California and the neighboring greater Sacramento and Bay Area, that in, you know, December, we will be at capacity. So just to go back to the EPI curve here in Lake County, we've increased fairly dramatically since mid to late October. And where I think what we know and where I think we need the opportunity to focus is reducing transmission in sort of four key settings. The, about one in three cases, we believe, became infected through household transmission. About 30% of cases in Lake County, we believe, have been infected through community transmission. I'm going to briefly explain the difference here. So the 6% are cases who say, yes, I've had known contact, close contact with someone who tested positive and that was out in a community setting. And then this 24% of people are cases who say, you know, no, I've had no known, no close contact with a known case or, you know, I, I don't know, but have ruled out any other sort of risk factors or potential exposures like congregate living settings, which make up about 22% of our cases and workplace contact, which makes up about one in 10 of our cases. So it's these four settings that are really critical to prevent new infections. And what I just want to say, well, household, you know, transmission is the leading setting, one out of three. It's in these three settings that we, that's how it gets introduced into the household, right? Someone gets sick in a community setting or they, you know, they get sick at work, they work in a congregate living setting and then they go back home or they get sick at their workplace, get infected at their workplace and then come back home. So really, it can be really challenging to prevent transmission once it's introduced into household. into household, the household. And of course, there's many things we can do, intervene at this point, but it's cases that bring in into the household that we can really focus on prevention and reducing So I will, oh, I did want to say, I've been looking, there've been a lot of questions, good questions about gatherings and how, that's a conversation happening throughout the state and nationwide, and it's really challenging to tell. About ten percent of cases report having attended a gathering in the last, the fourteen days prior to known infection. And it's really a mix of types of gatherings. It's, we're seeing, you know, a handful or smaller social gatherings among friends, a handful smaller, you know, what are called family dinners with multiple households. We see a couple, you know, potential exposures at restaurants, some travel. So it's really sort of a hotspot, the way I see it, when we think about our community transmission, it's more like spot fires rather than one single setting, which of course makes the intervention point more challenging. But I really think we're seeing it across sort of different settings within the community. So I'll stop there. Dr. Pace, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, so maybe I'll come back in, and then I'm sure people are gonna have some questions for Sarah afterwards, but thank you very much for that. So, you know, again, to kind of give a little more overview about what we're seeing in the community right now, we do have an outbreak in the jail. It seems to be reasonably well-controlled at this point. There's a lot of work going into separating people out, which is a real challenge in the jail because there's just not a whole lot of space. We've had the state infection control experts come in and talk with us and give recommendations, and I think the chair's staff is doing a great job there to try to keep things under control. And so far, we're doing pretty good. It's not eliminated yet, but we're not seeing explosive growth of cases that you see in other places around. I believe there's only been one person that's gone to the hospital and they've recovered and gone back, so we've not seen some of the terrible things that you see, that we've seen in other places around the state. There's a large outbreak now in the Native American community that happened at a large gathering, and so we're working with the tribal community and with, we had a meeting with the Indian Health Service yesterday, trying to get in front of this. It's, the Native American community is very vulnerable. We've seen some really bad outbreaks in different places around the country, so this is a real serious thing for us, and we're having a meeting again this afternoon to try to make plans, to try to get in touch, get on top of this. There's also, several businesses are having positive tests, you know, and I think one of the things that Sarah pointed out about the community transmission is, very likely a lot of that is in businesses as well. People don't really know, the ones where they don't really know, but that they probably got it out in the community someplace. Any place where people are gathering is where you're gonna see it. Anytime you're having contact with people that are not from your household, there's some risk. And so this is part of what we're seeing, and so the businesses, for the most part, have been quite cooperative. They work with us when there is a case identified in there, in the business, we will work with them about identifying who's been in contact, staff and public, if that's possible, and then oftentimes, especially the food places, will close for a while and do some disinfection, and then if certain staff need to be sent home, they send them home. And so it's a whole process that goes on here, a lot of work behind the scenes going on to keep things safe, and we really appreciate the businesses that have been really cooperative around this. There's also been some cases in the schools. There's been no significant outbreaks at this point, but cases do pop up, and then it's the same process of going in and trying to identify the contacts and have those people stay home and all that. So it's just, you know, I think this is gonna be part of what we're going to be working with in the coming months. Everybody on the call probably is going to know people that turn positive and have to figure out what your risk is and how to take the steps to keep people safe by not going out into public and everything. So just now to kind of go into the response part a little bit, we've talked a lot about the disparity issues here in the past, and one of the things we're seeing is in the, some of these dynamics are shifting a little bit. Before, we were seeing a really big surge in cases in the Latino community. I think that's changing now. So before, it was almost fifty percent of the cases were in the Latino community. In the last month or so, it's gone down to twenty-seven percent, which is a big drop. And it's really nothing that we've done at this point. We're trying to get a plan together for that, and we're in the process of working on that, but it's, I think it's the change in the agricultural season and probably some people going back to Mexico for the holidays and different things. So, but that's definitely dropped off, and we're seeing a significant improvement. In the white community, it's gone up from thirty-three percent of the cases to forty-six percent of the cases. So that's, we're definitely seeing a rise in the percentage of cases in the white community, and it's also a rise in the Native American community. That went from like three or four percent of the cases up to nine percent of the cases, and that was before this outbreak, so I'm sure we're gonna see a big rise in that. So in terms of addressing the disparities, there is money that's coming in from some of the state and federal funds that is gonna be directed towards addressing these disparities, these health disparities, and our RFPs are being written, they shouldn't be going out this afternoon. So if people are interested in helping be part of the solution to addressing some of these health disparities, we are putting out some, a request for proposals to help us address that, and they should be going out today. So hopefully by, you know, the first of the year, we should be actually getting some real solutions. Until that point, we're kind of running as fast as we can to try to help address these things as they go. So in terms of the testing, we are continuing with the testing. Last week, a couple of days, they were closed because of the holidays, of course. We are shifting the sites around a little bit because of the weather, and so people need to kind of check in and see about, make sure the sites, if you went to one place last time in Lakeport, it's gonna be at a different place next time you go. So just look on the website about that. We do have these Binax Now tests, which are, these are the antigen tests with the rapid turnaround. We've gotten several thousand from the state at this point, and so we're trying to distribute them to where they can be used well. These are particularly good, like in the outbreak in the native community, and we did a testing site where we used a bunch of these, where we can find out right then if people are positive or not, and it helps us to try to contain the outbreaks once they go. So those are, we do have some of those, if some of the community partners are interested in that, they can talk to us about it. In terms of the contact tracing, because of the big rise in cases now, we're no longer able to keep up and do everything that we've been doing up to this point. So since March, we've been able, with the kind of diligent work of the nurses and with some help from the state and some volunteers, we've been able to really keep up and contact people pretty much within twenty-four hours and talk to them about who they've been in contact with and what their symptoms are, and try to address that. Now we're having to back off a little bit just because we're not able to keep up, there's so many cases, and we're trying to prioritize the congregation, the folks that are healthcare workers or teachers in schools or people that are in the more risky situations that we wanna do that. People may notice that if they do get contacted by us, they may be getting like a text or an email with a survey, please fill that out and send that information in so that we can, it basically streamlines the process. It's not a spam, it's the health department trying to reach you to streamline the process because before, there would be, you know, an extensive interview to try to get all this information, and now because of just inability to keep up, we're gonna be using some of these other strategies. The housing issues continue to evolve. The Elijah House over at the old juvenile hall is working well, they're pretty much full up all the time now. They've recently had somebody graduate, they got a job and got out, so really seeing some good success there. The Hope Center, I believe, is opening December eighth, if they get all their approvals and everything through, so they're very close, it's just final inspections and all that kind of thing. The Warming Center is working to try to provide the service for, especially during difficult weather and bad weather. They've started some training and they've done the first phase of the training. They're having a little trouble getting a location, and so their model that they're thinking about doing is doing a pop-up strategy when the weather drops below, I guess freezing, and they're projecting that the next date, that they're, the first date that they're seeing the projection for the weather to be that bad is the, is twenty-third of December, so they're kind of planning for a pop-up at that time. But, so, I mean, part of the question is, is just, you know, I guess there will be some discussion at some point about pop-ups, sites, are those gonna be adequate? What about the environmental inspections and all that? And then the other thing is location, they're having trouble finding a consistent location, and so if anybody has ideas about that, they should get in touch with the Health Department or Pastor Shannon because this is a really important service. The homeless community is vulnerable this time of year all the time, but especially with COVID. And so having a good, solid site where people can stay warm and get out of the elements and also stay safe is really important. So the next thing on my list is to talk a little bit about enforcement. We did have the compliance officer ordinance is moving forward now. We are in the process of trying to hire two people part-time to work with the business community and to work with the community at large about how to comply with the orders. They're gonna be working through code enforcement, but now there's some kind of discussions with the unions and it's kind of working through the HR process right now. So we're hoping that those folks will be available and able to help after the first of the year. You know, this is just the process with all these things. Talking a little bit about the vaccines, the COVID vaccine is moving along. We have, there's two of them that have been sent to the FDA for emergency use authorization. The hope is, is that some of the shipments are gonna be occurring by mid-December. The way, and there's a lot of planning going on statewide and locally about how that's gonna get distributed. The idea is, is there's gonna be not nearly enough vaccine for probably several months. So the beginning, the first phase of it is gonna be mainly geared towards healthcare workers so that we can keep the hospitals and the clinics running during this difficult time that we're entering into here. And so both the hospitals are signed up and are gonna be conduits for these vaccines coming in. The Health Department may end up doing some of them, but there's some logistical challenges with special freezers needed and big lots of shipment, but we are in the process of working with that. But there should be some, at least some vaccines should be coming into the county by, within a couple of weeks, that will be targeted mainly for the healthcare workers. But I think by the time really that the vaccine's gonna be available for the general public, it's probably gonna be late spring kind of time. You know, they sort of have these sort of tiers, the healthcare workers are the first tier, and then the people in the long-term care facilities are the second tier, essential workers, and then the third tier is gonna be people with chronic medical conditions and the folks sixty-five and older who are most vulnerable. By the time you get through, all those people that want to get vaccinated, get vaccinated, and we still have enough supplied, it's probably gonna be, you know, April or May. And I'm expecting that really we'll probably be seeing some impact on the community transmission by next summer. So, yeah, I want to talk a bit about the surge. So Sarah was kind of pointing out some of the issues around hospital capacity and things like that. This is really the biggest concern right now in terms of planning for how to respond to the pandemic, and this is really a lot of what's behind the going to the purple tier, trying to slow, trying to put interventions in place that slow the transmission of the virus in the public. Because if you look at those graphs, what they're really projecting is that, you know, the infection that's already in the community now is going to show up in hospitalizations in two weeks. So there's really nothing we can do about what's gonna happen in two weeks. But what we do now will affect three weeks and four weeks down the road, so we have to sort of try to stay in front of it because if we wait too long till the ICU's filled up and then we say, uh-oh, we really need to do something, it's gonna go two more weeks of a really worsening situation. So the local hospitals have been very forward-thinking about this and doing a lot of planning, as have the clinics. Tribal health has been, done a great job in terms of planning for this and has the other clinics as well. So we're, you know, we're in a situation where people have done some planning. The model before had been to use regional centers. So the state had set up this sleep center place down in Sacramento, there's other places around the state that are big pavilions, you know, if you think about what you saw in New York City where they had some of these huge pavilions that were set up as kind of low-level hospitals, that was sort of the plan that the state did back in April or May. I think they didn't end up getting used that much, and there's a big expense, and so this time, they're a little reluctant to go that route. They were talking about using the Sleep Train Center, now there's some talk that they're gonna hold off on that. They're sort of available if it really gets bad, but they're trying not to set it up. There's also, the issue is space, supplies, both of those are manageable at this point. The third issue is staffing, and staffing is gonna be the biggest challenge. It's gonna be a challenge for us in Lake County, it's gonna be a challenge for us statewide. And so, you know, the plan right now is, is that the local facilities can expand to some extent and probably double ICU capacity a little bit more and do some expansion of the med-surg beds as well. Typically, what happens is both these hospitals run pretty full most of the time, and they tend to send people out regionally. Adventist in St. Helena has been closed because of the fire damage. They are planning to be open as of the eighth of December, and as long as inspections and everything goes okay, so that's just a week now. So that's very good news for us because they're a big resource for us. But really, thinking about how to transport people out and how to do the plans as these other locations are getting filled up is a big deal. LA right now is, they're concerned that their hospitals are gonna be overwhelmed in two weeks, that's sort of their current projection. So they've set up a situation where they're going even further than the state tier system is, and they've banned outdoor dining at this point, they're not permitting outdoor gatherings, they're really shutting down more because they're in this mode of being very, very concerned about what's coming by the projections. For us around here in Sonoma County, the hospitals seem to be doing okay. There's been some reports that there's been some staffing shortages, but for the most part, in terms of occupancy, they've been doing okay. And at this point, I haven't really heard the hospitals talking much locally about discontinuing elective surgeries or other things like that, like they did back in March and April. So, you know, I think that's gonna be one of the things that when the capacity starts filling up more and people start getting more anxious, that they'll probably be starting to discontinue some of those more elective things that can be held off. So we're having a surge planning session tomorrow with the local hospitals and with the EMS because transport's gonna be an issue as well. You know, the question's gonna be, how much can we manage at home versus how much can we ship people out to other areas? And then where the state's gonna be, show up with these alternate care sites like the Sleep Train Center or something like that. So it's, you know, a very complex thing, and I think we sort of thought maybe some of this was gonna be happening back in March and April, and it didn't turn out to be that way, fortunately. And we're in a similar situation now, it's accelerating more quickly, and so we're definitely concerned that things are gonna be going that direction. And part of what's being done for that is these interventions, decreasing the amount of movement around society, in the businesses, in the churches, in the restaurants, these kind of things, to try to slow down the transmission. When you see what's happened over in Europe and other places, when they really put these strong interventions in place, the curves drop off pretty dramatically. And right now, all we're seeing is the curves going up. So, you know, just to talk about the rationale for why this stuff is being done this way. So the last little piece I just want to say is that, you know, we're doing the surge planning, we're working on, we are now in the purple tier, which is, and I suspect we're probably gonna be here for a couple of months. So I really, it's not, we have to be here for a minimum of three weeks, but if things change for the better, we can get out in three weeks. But realistically, I think people ought to really kind of plan for a couple-month process, and I think probably in the coming days to weeks, we're gonna be seeing more-- And I think probably in the coming days to weeks, we're gonna be seeing more um restrictions being placed on folks to try to slow the transmission, to try to um keep the hospitals from getting overwhelmed, to try to stop the su- try to slow down the suffering and the and the loss of life that could be coming. And um this is, these are the tools that we have in place. So um I know this is a really hard thing for people to hear, and it's very frustrating at this point, nine months into this pandemic, to have to be uh revisiting this at this point. But um that's basically what we're um uh confronted with right now. And there's been some talk about, there's uh in the governor's press conference yesterday, he was talking a lot about how to help businesses to help keep them alive through this next couple of months. And uh they're working on some funding possibilities and things like that. So I really encourage people to work, the Economic Development Council here and is working on some of these things. And so the more people can get together and reach out and and try to figure out how to get through this next couple of months is a good thing. I think really, oh, one other thing is just to mention is the schools. So the schools have been making plans to open, and while we were in the red, they could open, but now we're in the purple. They're not gonna be able to do that unless they're, the ones that are already open can continue going. There's definitely a push uh kind of statewide and and nationally to um support schools being open, especially the elementary schools. It seems like the outbreaks are are less in the schools than we initially were worried about, especially um K through six. So um, you know, we will continue to try to support getting kids back into school as possible. I think this next month is gonna be just a really tough time and uh probably not the right time to think about making any big changes. And then the last thing is, is you know, the way that we will get through this, this is going to end. And it's um, this is, we kind of anticipated it coming this way uh over the last six months. If you look back at some of the things that I've talked about, it's uh really anticipating that come wintertime, late fall winter, when it starts getting cold and people go inside and the flu season starts, it it could all get pretty, pretty tough. And here we are. And uh but, you know, in a couple of months, I think we're gonna be out the other side. So I think if people can really just kind of take this uh, deal with this challenge like they've dealt with the other challenges of fires and other things, and just kind of stay home, stay stay close, buckle your seatbelts, and uh really try to buckle down and not not uh push the edge, not try to slip slip away and do things that you could get away with before because it won't work that same way now. And then, you know, in a couple of months, we'll be able to come back out of this, and the vaccine will start to be getting more available. And I think by, you know, by summertime, we're gonna be seeing a really different situation. And so if we can just get through this winter and keep everybody alive, that's really really the goal here, keep the businesses alive as well. So that's all from me, thanks. Thank you, Dr. Pace. Super George Scott.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your update. I just have a couple of questions for you. Um, you stated that the the county now has some fast turnaround tests. How effective are those compared to the other tests that we do?
So, yeah, the uh, so there, there's three levels of tests now. So there's the um, the PCR test that we rip mail out. Those are considered the best. Those are considered the most accurate. They take, you know, a couple of days to get the results. You have to go get done either by your medical provider at the testing site. It's kind of a hassle. Um, the second test is the rapid turnaround test that we've had available now for six months or so, the Abbott machine that they have at Tribal Health, they have at um Adventist Hospital, a couple of places. Those are the ones that take about a half hour. Those are similar to the PCR tests in the way they work. And so those have a similar accuracy. The one we have now, this Binax test, and there's other ones. These are called the antigen tests. So these are 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 different technology, and they're not as accurate. Usually, if they test positive, they're correct. If they test negative, they sometimes have false negatives. So we we're usually trying to use them when somebody's either symptomatic or in an outbreak situation. I think these are the, these are probably going to become available to the public before too much longer. You know, they probably, you'll be able to get it and and do it to your kids at home and uh find out in fifteen minutes whether they're actively contagious or not. This is, this is, this tends to pick up when you have a higher level of virus, and so the the people that are really contagious usually turn positive. Um, right now, it's not available to the public, but we have quite a bit of it. And so the way we're thinking about using it is in the nursing home, if somebody's symptomatic, do they have COVID or do they have a cold? Well, if you test with this, it gives you some information. Or a kid at school, or a firefighter, you know? I mean, so it's, it really helps with uh decision making in real time, and then usually we back it up with the mail out one as well.
Right. And then my next question, um, you're saying with the the Health Department's now doing track and tracing, that they're sending text messages or emails, um, and you know, that it's not spam? Is there a certain email or a certain number that people can look for to know that that's, you know, this is real and it's not spam?
Yes, good question. Let me uh, let me, you know, we're just in the process of doing this right now. So uh, I mean, it just turned over really, as of Thanksgiving, we were up to date, and now we, it kind of, we're underwater now. So let's see if somebody answers my um.
Okay.
If Carolyn or somebody answers that.
And then um, I know you touched on it a little bit, um, the state has talked about a deep purple. Do we kind of know what that might look like? I know it's gonna be more restrictive, but do we have any idea what deep purple tier might look like?
Um, they haven't really been talking too much about that. I think what, that the signs we can, so they haven't been very transparent about that for obvious reasons because everybody will push back. I think if you look at LA, or if you think back towards the shelter in place back in March or April, there's gonna be some hints there. I think they've learned some lessons. So like if you look, basically, again, what we're talking about is not having people outside of your household come together. Schools seem to be the exception, especially with younger kids. But so anything that go is like, so going out and hiking or going out on the lake in your boat is probably okay. Going to uh a a big outdoor church gathering with thirty to fifty people is probably not as good an idea. Um, so you know, LA, like I said, they they've eliminated outdoor dining. Um, I think, uh, you know, so I, and how long it's gonna last, we don't really know. You know, they're they're probably, it would be something like a month. And then if, then if the curve shifts, then they can back off from some of these things. But I would suspect it's gonna be outdoor dining, um, uh, any kind of gatherings probably, any o- out of the household gathering. So it'll feel a little bit like it did back in March and April, but they're gonna let people go outside more. There there, it's not gonna be as completely shut down, I think, because I think they really tried to learn the lesson from that. I think the other thing is, there's a discussion I've been hearing about the about why they let the large box stores stay open, but they did not allow the smaller mom and pop retail stores to stay open. And so is there a way to allow all the stores to stay open to some extent where they do more um uh capacity? What's a safe capacity? What's a not safe capacity as opposed to this essential, non-essential thing? These are the discussions that they're trying to figure out how to do. You know, we don't, we're kind of all making this up as best we can as we go and trying to be as fair and and um even handed as possible. But uh, something's, something's cooking, and I think it's probably gonna come out before the end of the week. I'm not sure what it is.
Right. And then with um the COVID vaccine, do we have an idea of how many we are going to get? Are they doing it by population? Are they doing it by who you have in your community? How are, how are they gonna be?
Well, you know, so at this point, we don't even know, there's no vaccine that's even approved at this point. So we don't even know what it is or how much there is. Uh, they are working hard, the CDC and the and the state level are working hard to have clear guidelines about it. I think a lot of it's gonna be population based and also um equity based. So the the folks that have the more cases and the more cases in the disadvantaged communities are probably gonna get a little bit more vaccine. I suspect, you know, again, for us, it's gonna be, for the first several months, it's probably gonna be mainly enough for the healthcare workers, probably EMS, and probably the folks in the clinics and the nursing homes, but not, it before, it's probably gonna be, you know, a couple of months before we're even able to uh give it to the um residents of the nursing homes and then the essential workers. And so it's gonna take a while to roll all this out. And I think probably in the beginning, you know, I'm sure Santa Clara County is gonna get a lot more than than Lake County, you know? That's just the reality of it and um.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Supervisor Batier?
Yes, thank you for the update, Dr. Pace. Um, I wanted to ask real quick, how many uh total cases have we had in the jail outbreak thus far?
My, you know, I I believe it's about thirty. Um, there's been a couple of different pods. These are all, these are inmates. And then there's been about two or three staff that have been identified. Um, most of the ones that have been identi- most of the inmates that have been identified have now come off of the the isolation and quarantine. And um, but I think there's still maybe ten or so that are still positive.
Okay.
Dr. Pace, does that include the um, the cases of those that were released um when they had COVID?
Well, the only ones I'm aware of, there's a couple of them that they picked up in booking that got um identified as positive and then were not um, were not um, didn't enter the jail. Um, there were some, they were talking about at one point uh uh releasing a few folks that uh, then their their tests turned positive, and so they didn't release them, they kept them in. Um, so, but.
So it's kind of a more, it's kind of a more or less type number than probably we did. We're not, we're not exactly sure. Because I know there was one, one guy that, from Florida, that was arrested and had COVID. I don't remember if it, the test came back after he was released or he was released after he was found out. I don't, I don't remember, but I know there's been.
Yeah, that, that case, he he, he was gone before we uh got the positive test. And uh, and that's, yeah.
Yeah. And my, the reason for my question is just to kind of get an idea of uh the total number of cases we've seen in the last couple of weeks, few weeks, which has been the timeline as well for the outbreak for the jail versus what's truly happening within our community. There's definitely a uh point of connection between those in the jail, including our correctional officers and our community, but it's not the same level. It's similar to a uh congregate living situation such as our skilled nurse facility where we can really see it uh growing and growing rapidly exponentially in those facilities because of the close proximity uh that they live. Um, so I, I was just curious about that. And 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 I just have a general question about the um, and this has nothing to do with our county, but a general question about vaccinations. Vaccination is not like you have a force field around your body and it bounces off and you never get it. You actually have the ability to carry the virus. The virus does not do any uh ha- has the, because of the vaccination, the virus does not um harm you in the same way, uh or does not harm you at all depending on the quality of the the vaccination. But you still have the potential to pass the virus even if you have a vaccination. Am I correct on that?
Well, different vaccines work different ways. And um, so that's a, that's an outstanding question about this vaccine. They've not tested that. So for this vaccine, what they've tested is people getting sick and and um um having to be hospitalized and stuff, and they've seen a definite decrease in all that with the vaccine. They've not tested for infectivity. Is the person contagious? You know, they've, they, that's not, that's not a known thing. So this whole, I mean, hopefully, the vaccine, typically vaccines will stop you from getting. You you do get the va- you do get the um, the the virus or the bacteria enters into your body, but then you, your immune system fights it off and and stops it. So uh, but not all vaccines work that way, and it is possible that you actually get the infection and it's at a low level and you can actually transmit it to other people. That question hasn't been answered yet. So a lot of this discussion about herd immunity uh and vaccines, um, we're not sure exactly how that's gonna play out yet. That's part of what happens when you move a vaccine along so quickly. You know, the the quickest um approval of a vaccine prior to this was four years. And so now this has been done in whatever, eight months. And uh, um, so there's a lot of unanswered questions. There's a lot of unanswered questions about um exactly how it works, how it's gonna protect problems and uh all that. And um, um, so we'll, we'll see.
And I appreciate the answer, that there's so many unknowns still with things that are moving forward so quickly. And I believe December tenth is when the FDA is looking at approving or not approving the emergency approval for the uh vaccinations or the vaccine to go ahead and move forward, uh something along that timeline. Uh, and and the reason I ask about the vaccination is because I, in my opinion, and granted, I don't think we can deviate from what the state or the federals are gonna tell us to do when they give us the vaccine. Um, it seems to me that our skilled nurse facilities would be our number one place since that's where we saw the biggest amount of death. Um, and so I'm worried that, uh, granted, I want our healthcare workers to be protected as well, uh, but if they still have the capability, granted, it's an if, to carry the virus, then that means that they're safe, but the patients that they're dealing with who might be chronically ill and very high risk people um may still be uh at risk as well because of that situation. So it it's, it's tough, it's tough, but thank you for the information.
Any more questions uh from board members? Supervisor Brown?
So I I just, I, you know, you've covered a lot of it, and I just wanna go over, you know, a couple of things. Um, one, you know, the the um percentages of the Hispanic population, I think, just real quick, I, I think that's predictable. I think you're, you're exactly right. After harvest, many of the transient workers have moved on and 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 gone back to their homes, whether it be in Mexico or Central Valley or somewhere that uh that they uh they live in the off season. Um, so I think that has a lot to do with it. And then the, the school situation has a lot to do with it, too. I know um in years past, when when I was coaching during that type, that season, sometimes they would leave as soon as school was out and go back to Mexico, and then you'd lose half your team um for months. So I I know, you know, they do, they do travel. I think that's probably, has a lot to do with that. So um, and the other thing is, I know it's a sore subject, certainly it is with uh some, some of the folks at the fairgrounds, but I think the fairgrounds needs to be pursued as far as, you know, as an an alternative to uh to just a pop up. I mean, the fairgrounds is not being used. It hasn't been used since March. Who knows when it'll be used again? And to be honest with you, the future of of the fairs in in California are in jeopardy to begin with. So um, I I don't, you know, I think taking no for an answer, just because that was the answer, I think is probably um, probably letting letting folks off the hook that, you know, it's a, it's, the property is owned by us. It's not owned, it's owned by the state, um, the taxpayers. And I think, you know, if the state is really serious about, you know, dealing with this homeless issue during the pandemic and not causing a spread from that population or in that population, I think that that's a good alternative. And I think somebody needs to really stay uh stay on top of that and and go um, go to the next level if necessary. I think, I know the board members are are open to it, and I think that, you know, they should be talked to. So or they, you know, they, they're open to working with the community, put it that way. Um, so I I think, I think you really should push that. The other question I have, um, because this um purple, deep purple, purple rain, whatever the hell you wanna call it, but the, and the curfew and all that, um, uh, there, it's affecting a lot of businesses, but you know, the, one of the major um industries and businesses that we haven't heard of, heard about, and I'm, I'm curious, and I, I was hoping that uh maybe Moke or Eddie could weigh in on how it's going to affect the um, the casinos and and their operations, you know, that are, you know, they've been able to operate fortunately, and there are, you know, hundreds of employees affected. And so how does that affect them? Um, and not just them, but their patrons. Um, you know, the pay, the uh, I know they're, you know, a different level as far as requirements, but they're, you know, they've been affected throughout this as well. And I I I see this as something that we haven't talked about, and I think it's important that the community know exactly what's happening there.
Um, well, you know, obviously, I I can speak on on behalf of Middletown. We we've been working, obviously, with uh uh Dr. Pace and the Health Department. We'll also be uh working uh with the uh, with the Governor's Office, or should you recall this week, uh that we're working. So with the new rules coming down, it's something that we are monitoring. It is going to affect us. Um, you know, obviously, our is a government operation from the federal side, and uh we'll continue to uh coordinate with the Governor's Office uh on our issues. But it is currently already uh starting to affect us, um, at least uh for Middletown Rancheria and how we approach this. And um. And um, yeah, we've been severely affected uh, throughout this entire thing. Uh, with layoffs and uh, the potential of even more uh, things happening at this point. So uh, as, as we make decisions, we will keep Dr. Pace and our public health office uh, informed of uh, how we move forward. But ultimately, uh, we will be working directly with the governor's office on what the next steps are uh, here in this, you know, at least for Middletown Rancheria.
Thank you, thanks, Moke.
Supervisor Crandall? You can unmute, you can unmute Jake.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So I, um, one, one thing I do know, uh, so far, I, from this new order given out by the state, I've seen that Upper Lake has uh, the Upper Lake Tribe, Running Creek has, they're, they're going to honor the curfew and close at 10:00 PM. I'm not sure how Robinson is going to uh, go with that yet. I haven't been on the council for about a month and a half. But what I do know is since this, since it's got somewhat worse, I know they've shut down once to uh, get a, get a, get everybody tested to make sure that people were um, not positive of COVID. And uh, since then, they've been operating from, I think it's uh, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Um, but no, I think it's 12:00 AM, sorry. And um, I'm not sure if they're going to honor that. I think they meet tomorrow, so I'll know more after that. Um, but it has been a, it hasn't taken a heavy effect on it. Uh, they're doing uh, I know in some instances, they're doing like takeout orders to compensate for the restaurant situation, things like that. Um, so um, so and, and then the customers, you know, they all have to wear masks and they've been seeming to do so. Um, and they have security, they have security intact so that that way um, they ensure that it's uh, it's mandated. Um, and so, um, but I don't know how it looks for uh, this next situation. Uh, I'll know next week for sure, so.
Yeah, and I can give you an update on our hours too. We are working, we are open from uh, 10 to, I think it's 10 to 2:00. Uh, we have closed our, we closed our uh, indoor dining immediately and we'll be looking at the hours as we move forward. And you know, the protocols we have in place, uh, the one thing we do obviously is complete masking. You do not enter without a mask. Uh, the one thing I think that gives us an advantage of other opportunities too, at business standpoint is we have cameras for everything. So if there are situations, we're able to track and trace and do other instances like that. But uh, we'll continue to do everything that we can to try and survive, uh, but also taking in the, the health and the safety of our community is always uh, top of the conversation. So uh, you know, that's where we are and we will be talking directly with uh, the governor and the governor's liaison, hopefully sometime this week. I think Wednesday is our standing calls, uh, so that should be happening. So, Dr. Pace?
Thank you, I appreciate that, uh, that clarification. It's, you know, we hadn't talked about it and it's, you know, the, one of the largest employers in the county. And I think it's, we need to, we need to let people know, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. Uh, thanks, I just wanted a couple, answer a couple of questions. One is uh, Supervisor Scott's question about the emails. Um, the emails will come from something called CalConnect, which is the state um, data, database where, so if people get an email from CalConnect, C A L C O N N E C T, that's what it is. It's basically trying to, it do some, uh, a, a survey interview on, that would be, that we were, we have been doing in person, but now starting, moving forward, we're probably going to be doing a lot of them by the, by email or text. So that would be that. And then Supervisor Brown's um, discussion about the uh, fairgrounds is a great one. And so I'll bring that up to Pastor Shannon.
Supervisor Scott?
I would just like to add to the, the warming center. That group of people would love to do a full-time center Monday through Friday like we normally do. Um, at this point right now, we don't have the volunteers to make that happen. That's why we really haven't pursued, um, trying to find a building Monday through Friday because we need at least 40 volunteers to make this happen. Uh, and we've had it in the past and this year, right now, we only have eight. So there's no way we can make that happen with um, only eight people. So if anybody out there is interested in volunteering to make sure that we can have a warming center open Monday through Friday to help our most vulnerable community, please give me a call. 849-4414 and I will get you on the list and we'll make sure this happens.
Yeah, and I, I would like to add to that because I know it's, it is really tough. You know, people, people mean well, they want to uh, volunteer, they want to commit, they feel, you know, passionate about something and then, and then you get started and then you look around and they're gone because they have other things in their life. It's a long-term volunteer commitment on a lot of this stuff and this one's no, no different. But my point is, if you have enough volunteers to open up a pop-up, then you should have enough volunteers to open up a, a stick building, brick and mortar that's already existing. Um, in fact, you may actually keep a few of them if they, if they're in a building that's not a tent for a sheep herder.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, uh, one last question. Uh, Dr. Pace, wondering if it's possible to get a copy of that survey to see what it is that's being asked of folks uh, when they're filling out the survey?
I don't know, I'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any more questions from the board at this point? All right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
If you'd like to make comment, please do so now. This is item 6.4, our update on COVID-19. Okay Jake, don't see any hands up and don't hear anybody making public comment at this point. So we're going to go ahead, we are going to close uh, the virtual room, public comment. Do we have anyone in board chambers? Supervisor Sabatier?
We do not have anybody in the board chambers.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to close it, we're going to bring it back to uh, to the board for any final comments or questions for uh, Dr. Pace. Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I just have a quick question for Jake, actually. I know when Danielle from Calpine uh, was speaking, she said she had trouble putting her hand up. Uh, just want to make sure that this is uh, just a tech issue from maybe a, a user issue from her perspective rather than an actual tech issue with our uh, room. Just wanted to make sure that uh, everybody had the opportunity to uh, raise their hand or speak if they needed to.
Uh, yeah, um, when she, there's a hand up right there.
There we go.
Um, so when she said that, I did um, check my other monitor here and I was able to find the hand option. So it's still available and I did try to reach out to her to, to diagnose that. Um, but we, I wasn't able to come up with anything with her.
And I'm not sure if Carrie raised her hand to prove that you could raise her hand or if she has something to say.
It, it came up and then went down, so I, I think she was testing for us.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, any more questions or comments for Dr. Pace from the board? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so Dr. Pace, just one, one last thing. Uh, earlier when we were discussing vaccinations and, and of course, the first, the first batch of vaccinations would in, in essence, go to the healthcare workers, et cetera. Uh, did they, did they have any discussion possibly about teachers uh, being on, like, not, not on the top of the list, but in that realm so that kids can stay in school, things like that?
Yeah, the way I've heard that discussion is teachers would be in the essential workers, which is the uh, kind of the second tier.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for the update. We'll be uh, looking forward to these, you know, uh, moving forward now that we're in the purple tier. So uh, thank you very much. And uh, just for the board's knowledge, we talked about it earlier, uh, the recovery group, we will be meeting on a, you know, a weekly basis uh, while we move through this. So uh, please just want to say uh, thank you to everybody in uh, environmental health, public health department. I know you guys have been working diligently for months and everyone else in the county on this issue. Uh, I know there is fatigue, uh, but we're going to work through this. And um, any support you need, please do not hesitate to ask and we'll do our best uh, from a board standpoint to try and address those questions. So thank you and um, take care. And thank you very much to our community members and business owners that have been doing this for a long time. It is a very important time at this point to do everything we can uh, with the guidance that we do have, uh, to help us move through these next few months. Uh, thank you very much, everyone, thank you for the update, Dr. Pace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're going to move to our next item, our next agenda item. Our last agenda item on today's uh, open calendar and then we'll go to closed session is a consider, item 7.2, consideration of an advisory appointment for the Caliomi Water District Board of Directors. And I know this was put on the um, by the clerk of the board, but I know that um, uh, do we have anybody from Caliomi today on the call? I mean, uh, on the virtual room here, I apologize, Zoom? And it does not sound like it, okay?
Uh, no one has, uh, this is Jake. Uh, no one's tried to catch my attention, but I did send a mute request out to the floor to see if anybody wanted to speak up.
Okay, obviously this, this isn't my district. Um, I know that uh, they have reached out to admin and asked to have this put on the agenda. Um, they had missed some timelines on uh, the appointment process and I know they had worked with Anita to make sure that we'd met the requirements to get to this with the board. Um, so there is an appointment opportunity uh, to the Caliomi Water District uh, for Mr. Scott Hopkins uh, to be added to the board of the Caliomi Water District in um, South County. Uh, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up uh, for public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I've sent a mute request out to the floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay Jake, we're going to go ahead and close the room. We're going to bring it back to the board for action. Um, Supervisor Sabatier, if you would please uh, pick up the motion for me, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointment for uh, Scott Hopkins to Caliomi County Water District Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to move into closed session. Our, our closed session items are item 8.1, Public Employee Evaluations. Title, County Administrative Officer. And uh, second title is Director of Child Support Services. It's item 8.1. Item 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 E3, Claim of McQueen. Uh, and 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Decision Whether to Initiate Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D4, One Potential Case. And with that, we are going to go to closed session.